And welcome to the regular meeting of the Hamlet City Council. We're glad that everyone's here. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order. First item of business is our invocation. And we have with us tonight Bishop Thomas McDonald. If you would, please come forth, sir. Thank you. Good to have you with us tonight. We appreciate you coming.
Thank you. Let him hear bow. Father, right now in the mighty name of Jesus, we give you praise and honor and glory. We thank you for the wisdom and the knowledge that you have given men. Father, right now in the mighty name of Jesus, we ask you to go into the rest home, Lord. Touch the individual right now, Lord Jesus. Father, we actually bless our going and our coming. We thank you, Lord, because you've been so good to us, better than we've been to ourselves. Father, right now in the mighty name of Jesus, we give you praise, honor, and glory. We thank you for the city of Hamlet, Lord, for the great people, Lord. Father, right now in the mighty name of Jesus, we thank you for all things. Continue to bless in a mighty way. In Jesus' mighty name, we pray, and everybody say amen.
Amen. Thank you. Counsel, you have before you the agenda for tonight. What are your wishes on that?
So moved to approve.
Got a motion to approve the agenda?
Yep, second.
Got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ours likewise. Okay. You also have before you the approval for approval tonight, the budget work session and the regular minute meetings of April the ninth. What are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Did I get a second? Second from Mr. Stewart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ours likewise. I will come to that point in our meeting tonight where we'll allow comments from the attendees. If you've got anything you need to bring up tonight that is not on our agenda for further discussion, I ask you at this time to please come forth.
Good evening. My name is Michael Willman. I live in Hamlet, North Carolina. And I was here to find out tonight if we had an agreement or ruling on the issues we had last month as far as being able to park our trucks at home.
We, right now, we're deferring to the law the way it's written, and we will be taking this up next month.
Thank you.
We don't have the, we didn't have the information from the attorney soon enough to be able to take it up tonight.
I got the information to them too late, so that is on me, sir.
Alright, so we'll take that up next month.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Still with the same stipulation, there will be no enforcement until that time, right?
Right.
So you're good for a month.
Thirty days.
Thank you.
Thank you for understanding.
Thank you. Is there anyone else has items that they want to discuss with us tonight that's not on the agenda? Please come forward. Thank you. State your name.
Good afternoon. My name is Gerard Anthony Morrison from the illustrious Charlotte Street. Sorry about me catching my wind in here. Good to see everybody. Happy New Year. Haven't seen you all this year. But the, always good to be in the Hamlet. Want us to make a note for the illustrious John Coltrane Music Entertainment Festival. Got flyers for you. It's always the first Saturday in October, October fifth, twelve noon sharp. Love to see your faces in the place.
What's the date on it again?
October fifth, twenty nineteen. I'll send something to the clerk with them there. And this year, we're gonna do something even more special than normal. We're highlighting, in addition to our traditional stuff with John Coltrane and all the local talent, we're gonna be spotlighting women musicians and Alice Coltrane, who was John Coltrane's wife. She was a pianist, and just because her husband liked the way the harp sounded, she learned to play the harp. So I'm sure, I'm sure a lot of you married brethren can relate to that. Good supportive wives that do that type stuff. Good wives who just love learning new things, so, you know, teamwork to make a dream work in every household. But we wanted to make sure word got out to Hamlet where this is based at. But calling a special, doing a special call for women musicians, singers, designers. Also want to add some attention to one of my classmates, Angela J. Medlin. She's the, I forgot the formal title, but it's design manager. She's in charge of design for all of Brand Jordan and the Nike, right here from Hamlet, North Carolina. Alice Medlin is her mom. And during this time, it's almost a year now, the illustrious Jay Kenneth Lee, the first black to finish Chapel Hills Law School along with Harvey Beach from Charlotte Street. He was the lawyer for the A and T four. And in July, that will be a year that he's been transitioning. I want to thank you all also for the proclamation led by new councilman Maury Stewart from Charlotte Street. And for my grandmother, my beloved grandmother Ella, she came down here times with me and other times. So I wanted to thank you for sharing the love and appreciation and approving the proclamation to make it a Charlotte Street matriarch. So thank you all. Wish you the best.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. We appreciate that. We'll make note of that. October the fifth, twenty nineteen, John Coltrane Festival.
Mayor, would be any way we could get that on our water bills going out before that gets a little more PR to it?
It's a good idea. Does anyone else have anything tonight that's not on the agenda that we're going to discuss later? If not, we'll close the comments from attending. The next item of business under new business is a public hearing rezoning of the Golden Rule out at the intersection of McDonald Avenue and Highland Avenue. And at this time, a Mr. Billy Hatcher, senior owner of the Golden Rule, has submitted a rezoning request for his property located at eighteen oh five Highland Avenue. The quest is to, request is to rezone the parcel from RA twenty residential agricultural twenty to B three neighborhood business. The store operated as a grandfathered use until its closing, closing. Mr. Hatcher has a potential buyer that would like to open a convenience store at the location which requires rezoning. The planning board met on April fifteenth of twenty nineteen and offers a favorable recommendation to the rezoning. A public hearing has been advertised by first-class letter mailed to the surrounding properties. And at this time, I will open the hearing and welcome any public comments regarding this. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to comment on this? If not, at this time, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, we have a consistency statement and decision to rezoning for the Golden Rule. The general statute now requires the board to complete the consistency statement prior to making a rezoning decision. So counsel, we need to prepare and vote to adopt the consistency statement.
Motion.
Have a motion to adopt?
Second.
Have a second? Is there any further discussion on consistency statement? If not, all in favor, say aye. Ours likewise. At this time, once the consistency statement is completed, I will entertain a vote on whether to approve or deny the rezoning based on the consistency statement.
Motion.
Motion to?
Approve.
Approve. Okay, have a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Have a second? Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Ours likewise. And it is accepted. Very good. All in favor. We were expecting, there's Ms. Robertson tonight from the Lumber River Cog, and we welcome you here tonight.
Good evening. I come annually and sometimes more often to talk about the council of governments. I've got the annual report from last year that I'll leave with Gail that she can share with you. Couple of things coming up that I wanted to let you know about. This Friday, May seventeenth, at ten AM at the cog, we have a census twenty twenty complete count committee training. The census this year is gonna be primarily done by online. And so we have a lot of concern that people will not be counted in rural areas that do not have internet. So this is developing a committee to promote filling out the census and getting good response rate. Because as you all know, a lot of our funding comes from the census count. Also, on next Wednesday, May twenty second, there's an ethics webinar, webinar for newly elected or re-elected officials. Anybody that was elected in November needs to have this ethics webinar. And it's at ten AM at the cog. On June fourteenth, Friday, there is a elder abuse walk, first regional elder abuse awareness walk at the Pembroke Recreation Complex at nine AM. And I've got some save the dates information and the card of the one, of the person who's in charge of that, and I'll leave the stuff with Gail. And that's all the immediate stuff I have, unless anybody has any questions.
If not, counsel, while we have Ms. Robertson up here, we'll move along to item number nine. And she'll give us a good explanation, but we've been trying for some time to get a sidewalk put along Spring Street in front of the Memorial Park. And I believe the way that it was explained to me that there wasn't enough project involved, so they had to add something else to it. So what they have done is they've added Main Street from the depot down to Highway thirty eight.
That is correct.
And the sidewalk, and the total cost of the project, I didn't see that total cost. But our, our contribution to it would be thirty-six thousand four hundred, but the project is not expected to occur before twenty twenty-five. Am I correct?
That is correct.
And we would not have to expend any money until that time.
Correct.
And what you need here is a, is a commitment from the council.
A letter of support saying that y'all will, that you know that you're responsible for twenty percent of the cost. I would like to let you know that the house, NC House, has put in their budget provision to reduce the match for rural areas. But that has not passed. Obviously, the, all the budget's not out. The governor hadn't done theirs. So we're hoping that amount will be reduced, but right now, we have to go with the twenty percent requirement of match in order for the project to get in the final step. Right now, it's in the draft state transportation improvement program, and that will go before the Board of Transportation in September.
Okay. And the sidewalk up there would actually run from one seventy-seven all the way over to Wiregrass Road. So what are your wishes, counsel, as far as supporting this project?
A hundred percent. Agree.
I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay. I have a second? No second?
That is something that we've been needing to be, it needs to be done.
One seventy-seven to?
Yeah, from one, in front of Memorial Park. And the other one will run from down here at the depot all the way down to Highway thirty-eight. Twenty percent match, and that's, we're looking at twenty twenty-five.
So there's two sections?
That's right.
Yeah, two sections.
The section in front of park was, there has to be a minimum amount. And because that section wasn't large enough, we went to a second priority project that we had on the list. Those projects were identified in the Richmond County Comprehensive Transportation Plan a few years ago.
So I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I do. I have a second. I have further discussion. If not, all in favor, say aye. Ours likewise.
Thank you.
We'll get your letter out on that. Thank you, Janet.
We still looking at doing something in front of the park by the tins courts, even if we don't do anything but go in and put rock or something. We'll talk about it later, but just look at it.
This project may get done earlier than that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We've been trying forever. Okay, moving along to item number ten, the city manager's presentation of the budget message.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the city of Hamlet's budget officer and city manager, I am pleased to present for your consideration the manager and staff's recommended budget for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year. The recommended budget balance is at eight million, six hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. This consists of a general fund budget of five million, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars, two hundred and seventy dollars, a PAL bill budget of two hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, and an enterprise fund balance, fund budget of about two point eight million dollars. The recommended budget requires a six hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollar fund balance appropriation for the general fund with none for the enterprise fund needed. In a collaborative effort, the recommended budget was prepared over a two-month period amongst city staff coupled with direction and governing, governing input from the Hamlet City Council. Beginning at the March eighth budget planning session, council listened to the requests of multiple departments within the city and discussed what projects were critical needs to continue to provide the greatest degree of services to city residents. After preparing an initial draft budget, a second budget planning session held on April the ninth continued to yield a constructive vision focusing on the overreaching goals of betterment, balancing, and beautifying the city. The first commitment being betterment. In ever-changing times, it's important that the city consistently work towards bettering our community and our overall operations. The recommended budget is prepared with a mindfulness of recognizing the importance of betterment through several necessary investments. In an effort to provide across-the-board quality and superior services, the recommended budget seeks to make numerous necessary and forward-looking investments. These investments include a one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar investment in additional garbage truck, a sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollar investment in a limb trailer, a twenty-eight thousand dollar investment in four additional air packs for the Hamlet Fire Department, seventy-five thousand dollars in new police vehicles, a twenty thousand dollar investment in a truck for the Parks and Recreation Department, an investment of forty-two thousand, two hundred dollars in capital outlay equipment for the water plant and the water distribution system, and a one hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred dollar investment in the waste treatment and waste collection systems. These additional investments will help better the city in the future by providing necessary tools to provide quality and superior service to the city and the city residents. A strong economy and years of prior conservative spending have proved to be beneficial to the city's financial affairs. As the economy continues to thrive, now is the time to invest in bettering the city and providing for necessary capital improvements. Many of the aforementioned investments will prove to better the city throughout the next several years and to be used regularly to better the services offered by the city. That leads us to our second commitment, which is balancing. The recommended budget seeks to economically balance each account for the city and equally balance labor and benefits. By putting an emphasis on calculated expenditures and recognizing the importance of continuing to maintain a quality workforce, the recommended budget is not only balanced in accordance with North Carolina general statutes, but also with a mindfulness of the unique needs of the city of Hamlet. The recommended budget seeks to economically balance each account for the city by accurately projecting revenues and appropriately allocating expenses. For example, nearly one point six million dollars is projected to be received in ad valorem taxes in the upcoming fiscal year, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in vehicle taxes, and roughly one point three million dollars in various state taxes. These revenues have been carefully projected in order to balance the needs of the city in order to carefully and strategically fund necessary needs in the recommended budget. The recommended budget also seeks to equally balance labor and benefits within the city to recognize our stellar employee workforce. A three percent pay increase for all employees and a one hundred percent coverage of employee healthcare costs are both included in this recommended budget. City employees did not receive a pay increase in the prior fiscal year budget, and the city staff was able to negotiate one of the lowest increases in health insurance coverage that the city has experienced in many years, that being a one percent increase with Blue Cross and Blue Shield. The last commitment is beautify. In an ongoing effort to beautify the city and provide exceptional quality of life, the recommended budget provides several projects that will visually enhance our all-American city as well as provide stability to our citizenry. Among the projects that are included to further the commitments of beautifying the city is twenty-five thousand dollars to repave the senior center parking lot, sixty thousand dollars for new entrance signs, and twelve thousand dollars for continuing Fourth of July celebrations. These expenditures are bu, are budgeted for in order to ensure that we not only keep the city running adequately, but also provide measures to enhance the quality of life for our residents. The recommended budget does not provide for any utility or service rate increase in this fiscal year. The prior fiscal year's utility rate increase has stabilized the expenditures versus revenue disparity that was brought to council's attention last year within the enterprise fund and has proved, provided for much-needed revenue for emergency projects. Council will recall that some weeks ago, we had an emergency project that we were in desperate need of funds for. Currently, both fund balances for the general and enterprise fund are strong, and we project that the recommended budget will support and maintain economic stability for the city. In conclusion, the recommended budget is balanced and prepared in accordance with North Carolina general statutes, one hundred and fifty-nine dash eleven. Furthermore, the recommended budget serves to further, further the commitments of betterment, balancing, and beautification. The public hearing on this budget is scheduled to be held during the June eleventh regularly-scheduled Hamlet City Council meeting at seven PM here in council chambers. Any person wishing to make comments or ask questions may do so at the public hearing prior to the adoption of the budget ordinance. The recommended budget is available for public review here at Hamlet City Hall during normal business hours, and a notice of the availability of these documents and the scheduled public hearing will be published in the Richmond County Daily Journal in the upcoming days. I'd like to personally thank council for all of your input and patience, patience as we put this budget together over the past few months. It's always a difficult time, but I appreciate the understanding and cooperation that council had. I would also like to thank my extraordinary staff here at the city, particularly our wonderful finance director Jill Dickens, who worked tirelessly to prepare and assist in this recommended budget, and all those who were involved in the preparation of the recommended budget. It's with the sincerest gratitude and appreciation that I respectfully submit and recommend this proposed budget to the Hamlet City Council today, May the fourteenth. And that is all I have in regards to the budget message, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone have any comments about, about the budget?
Floor's open. You don't think the city does a good job. You got less than two million dollars in property taxes and vehicle taxes for an eight million dollar budget.
Mm-hmm.
And we make it happen.
And while we're on that, we want to extend our condolences to Ms. Dickens and the passing of her father. And that was unexpected, and we are with you on that. Next item of business is item number eleven, which is a resolution authorizing the sale of K-9 Rudy. Whereas the city of Hamlet owns Police K-9 Rudy, who has served the city for approximately two years, and whereas the city council of the city of Hamlet grants full-service retirement, Police K-9 Rudy, whereas general statute one sixty A dash two sixty-six D permits the city council to authorize disposition of personal property that is without value, and whereas Sergeant Britt Emmerich will accept custody of the dog and assume all liability and responsibility for the care of the animal for the remainder of its life. Now therefore, be it resolved in accordance with section ten retiring canines of Hamlet's canine policy guidelines, that the Hamlet City Council authorizes the purchase of Rudy by Sergeant Britt Emmerich for the amount of one dollar effective May the fourteenth of twenty nineteen. I need a motion to accept that resolution.
Motion.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Ours likewise. Thank you. Counsel, you have before you volunteer applications. And we just have the one, am I correct? There's two in there? I've got Brown right here.
You have a junior and a senior.
Oh, okay. That's why I let that one get by me. Okay, and it's a recommendation of the Hamlet Depot Board to approve both of these members. Am I correct? Counsel, what are your wishes?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion?
Appreciate them volunteering.
All in favor, say aye. Ours likewise. How many does that bring us to now? Twenty? Okay. Very good. Counsel, you also have before you tonight tax releases for this month. What are your wishes on those?
Motion to approve.
Okay, the, I have a motion to approve tax releases. Need a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Ours likewise. Moving along to item number fourteen, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have several items of concern for council and the public tonight. The first is, late this afternoon, I spoke with the county manager, and they are going to be spraying for mosquitoes sometime in the upcoming week, as soon, or in the upcoming month, before the end of the month. As soon as we receive a definite date on that, we'll make sure to publish that so people, so people are aware of that. But they will be spraying sometime later this month for mosquitoes. Also, city offices will be closed on May twenty-seventh. That will not affect any type of residential garbage pickup, but city offices will be closed on the twenty-seventh. And lastly, yesterday Craig Newton and the DOT came down to do an inspection of the depot. It was the first inspection that they'd done in over six years. They were very impressed with the facilities, very impressed with the active volunteer boards that we had, very impressed with the landscaping grounds. It was an overall good visit. They stayed the duration of the morning, and we got a lot of, a lot of good feedback from them and a lot of things that we're gonna be looking to hopefully pair with state in the future to continue progress in our downtown area. Also, Silver Meteor is going to have a formal grand opening a little later in June. Depot boards, of course, worked very hard on that, so I hope that we'll be able to set a definitive date on that, and I'll make sure that council and the public is aware of that. Other than that, those are the only formal matters of concern that I have for council this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone got anything for the manager at this time? Okay, if not, we'll move along to item number fifteen, comments of council, and we'll start tonight with Mr. Stewart. Any comments tonight?
Again, glad to be serving the city of Hamlet and Mr. City Manager. We definitely will be missing your work to the city. Thank you so much. Thank you to go, but we understand what careers do and moving on to other places. If there's any reconsideration, but we understand, but thank you so much.
Ms. Maskey?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Martin?
Well, Mr. Stewart, I hate to see our city manager go. He's done a great job here. But obviously, we all understand, and I, I really appreciate him, his willingness to serve as our interim until such time that we can find somebody, and I hope he can stay that long. Other than that, that's all.
Thank you. Mr. McQueen?
Same thing. Great job on everything since you've been here. Staff with the budget, council with the budget. And thank you for being willing to show your love for Hamlet by giving up your free time. Just continue to serve until we find the person that we deem necessary to have the qualifications for that job. We really appreciate it, and professionally and personally, I'm gonna miss you.
That it? Mr. Bowie?
Um, all I have is, is budget session. That was a lot of hard work, a lot of crunching numbers, a lot of banging heads against the wall, just trying to get everything right to, to make sure that we come out on top without spending much money, give ourselves space for the future, because decisions we make now will affect us later on down the road. And Jonathan, I won't, I won't say it's goodbye. It's more like I'll see you soon. I know how to get to Charlotte, so I know where you'll be at, and I do wish you the best. If it were my money, I'd offer you a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to stay, just because I think you've done a great job. Probably better than I've seen in a long time come through here, just the, just the way you get out. The public loves you. I've not ran into maybe but less than a handful of people. I, I've not ran into maybe but, uh, less than a handful of people had, you know, but you're always gonna have haters. Those are the best ones, they're fun. But just keep being you, do what you do, go to Charlotte, have fun, enjoy your new job, keep it, you know, keep us posted, how it's going. Don't forget, you know, the little town of Hamlet when you get to Charlotte. So I just, I wish you the best. If there's anything we can do in the interim, uh, while you are still trying to help us out, don't ever hesitate to let us know.
Sir? Okay, go ahead.
And, and I know we're Facebook Live, so I wanna talk to the citizens and say, we, we encourage all citizens of Hamlet to please support the, um, City Council meeting. Um, all we do is for the citizens of Hamlet, so please come out every second Tuesday, um, at seven PM. Uh, uh, thanks a lot for coming in, I, I'm very big on the cit, on the census. Um, and so whatever you can do and help us with that, and anything we can do to be a part of that, we wanna account for every single person in, in the city of Hamlet, North Carolina. Um, and so, and again, what we do is for the citizens.
I hope you ask for some more coming next week.
Uh, I, oh, it won't be that Friday, it'll be next week, but yeah, absolutely. And then, and then I thank the citizens, you know, the citizens that come out to the meetings and give their reports and talk about different things, you know, we encourage that. Please come out, whatever you have, whatever concerns, that's what we're here for. Um, and Mr. Morrison, I thank you for coming, I would, I would like nothing more than for the city to, to support the John Coltrane. Uh, that's something that's been in, in, uh, you know, for Richmond for a long time. And I'd love to see that, that festival get to a point of, of really showing reverence to Mr. Coltrane being from, you know, the, the world would have you think that he's from High Point, North Carolina, but he is indeed from Hamlet. So let's support that.
Yes, sir, thank you for those kind words, and I echo the same thing about that census, yeah. That's a, that's a big thing, and the more people we got in Hamlet, the better it is for us as far as government, uh, looking after us. So, uh, we really want to try to do that. Um, well, Jonathan, I don't what to say, we just, uh, I'm gonna miss you as much as anybody. And, uh, it's, uh, it would be really hard to even try to sit up here right now and tell the citizens all the things you've done behind the scenes that have made improvements in the city. Uh, one of the things that I can never thank you enough for, and I'd love to see it in the next person, if we have a complaint out here on the street, or a complaint on your street, he and, uh, uh, would get in his car and drive out there and talk to those people. And I mean, how many places do you have that? And he would take this time and do it, and, uh, so we're gonna?
Mayor and manager both two weeks ago, right?
Yeah, yeah, it took all three of us out there the other day, didn't we? But anyway, you know, we try to do, all of us try to, uh, to get out and talk to people. I try to go visit one too, I know Mr. Martin does, and, uh, but we're retired, so it makes it a little easier for us. But everybody up here is concerned about what's going on in Hamlet. And, uh, we do try to be as responsive, because that's what we're up here for. You put us up here to represent you and to spend your money, and, uh, that's what we try to do, we do it the best we can. Uh, other than that, I think, we hope everybody has a nice, safe, uh, Memorial Day coming up the end of this month. Uh, TC, we appreciate what you do for us, thank you so much. And, uh, again, Jill, we feel badly for you and, uh, hope things will come around. Uh, at this time, I would, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Have a second? All in favor say aye, oppose likewise.